Hello, everyone, and thank you for joining us. This is No Soundbites Allowed, and I am your host, Michael Voss, Dragon of the Southern Tier. Today is March 21st of 2022, and I'm very happy to have a very special guest here, as you can see on the screen, and that is Mr. Matt Brainard of Look Ahead America. Now, before we get started, I want to take a moment to say, some of you who are watching this will be seeing this tonight at 7:00 PM on March 21st. Those on YouTube will be seeing it this weekend, and that's because of the censorship of YouTube. And we do apologize for that, but we will not let censorship ever stop us from being able to provide you with the information you deserve. Now, in terms of our wonderful guest here, he's probably a very familiar face for many people. You may have seen him on CNN, or on C-SPAN, or even on Tim Poole, where he has appeared twice. In fact, if you're a play, if you play the game World of Warships, you may have been playing against Mr. Brainard, because he's, he has a wide diversity in his life, and it's really interesting. But you've also probably heard a lot of the leftist media attack Matt Brainard and Look Ahead America, which is a bit upsetting, because they haven't actually spoken to him and given him a chance to speak. And that's what we want to do here today. While you're being distracted with Russia, and what's happening with Ukraine, even the now SCOTUS nomination, what's really important is what's happening in America that's going to affect us, not just today, but in the next several decades, for our friends and families, our children, and every aspect of America. So without further ado, let me actually start by the introduction. Matt, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to speak with you today and to learn more about you and your organization, Look Ahead America. Let's start with the very first thing, and I know most people say, well, introduce yourself. Let me ask you a slightly different question. What brought you to politics? What made you decide that you wanted to get into this insanity that we know as American politics?
I think my ethos, at least as I bring it to Look Ahead America, is very simple. Three steps. Number one, study the battlefield. Number two, determine where you can make a difference. Number three, go there. And I've been very aware of the potential that good people can have on not just their own lives, but on lives of them around them, their neighborhoods, their communities, their cities, their states, their country, the world, all humanity. And it just seems to me to be indulgent to neglect the potential you can have to impact God's creation for the good, and that is why I'm here.
Well, it's a pretty good reason. I can't think of much more than that. To be able to uplift people is, I think, one of the best ideals to be involved with politics versus what we see from many people these days, to try and change people or to promote an agenda, and even some doing it just for the money. And we see that in a lot of the left-leaning politics. So it's, it's nice to hear someone who's genuinely doing it for the good of people. So I definitely thank you and commend you for that. Let me ask you, so far in your life, you're a bit younger than myself, but still a very accomplished man, and by any standard that anyone can set out there, let me ask you, so far in your life, what has been your greatest accomplishment?
Getting married.
That's a, that's a big one.
I would say apart from that, you know, putting, taking it purely out of the personal, probably my work as the Director of Data and Strategy for President Trump's campaign in 2016. I, I played a role, but I, you know, my mind, it seems like it was potentially determinative, but who really knows? In formulating a strategy, then executing a strategy that I believe helped him win the nomination, and then carried him through the general, which was very simple. There was a tremendous population in America that does not vote, and an even bigger population, or subset of that, that does not vote in primaries. But a large number of those people had a great affinity for President Trump because of his message, because he had a message that resonated with them in a deeply personal way, in a way that no other political figure had been able to reach them. And that made them very enthusiastic about him. But again, they were not in the habit of voting. Voting is very much a habit, very much a culture, that they were, they were not a part of. So the idea was to identify these individuals and focus on them like a laser by getting them to turn out to vote. This is incredibly unusual, and I think, at least on the presidential level, had almost never happened before. Historically, campaigns focus on the people who are habitual voters and try to persuade them one way or another. We had a very different approach, where we'd find people who were already on board with our candidate and that message, and pestered them as many as seven or 12 times through door-knocking, mail, robocalls, phone calls, digital targeting, et cetera, to get them to turn out and vote. And a good example of that is that we won the New Hampshire primary with 100,000 votes. In that primary, there were 65,000 people who should have been voted, who had never before voted in a Republican primary. And you carry that forward to the general election. You know, there was a time, I guess, when the country was more unified, where it made sense for candidates to try to persuade people who were maybe in the middle. Maybe they're unsure who to vote for, and just to target those swing voters, they were called, and move them from one direction to another. But I think we're getting past that into the age of calcified polarization. And that just becomes a matter of who can bring the most soldiers to the battlefield. And reaching into pockets of America, demographically, geographically, ideologically, that have not been actively participating and expanding the army in those directions is, I believe, the way forward, and that became crystal clear in the 2016 election. You can make the case, that was also the case in the 2020 election, where both candidates dramatically increased the number of people who showed up and voted for them, which historically has often not been the case. Usually, there's a drop in one party where, you know, the loser does not do as well as the winner, but both of them increased their margins, so the one increased by, by more, unfortunately. So that's, but that's, that's what we're facing. That's, that's my, what I'm most proud of is basically trying to, insofar as the campaign could have an impact in the 2016 election, introducing that strategy, developing it, and then executing it state after state after state to bring us victories, I think is probably my greatest political accomplishment so far.
It is, well, so far is the key word. I'm sure there's much more greatness to come, and I hope, and I hope for that, very much so. You know, that leads me to ask you a question. Now, I want to address a couple of things here. Election integrity, I want to talk about the school boards across the United States, talking a little bit about the January 6th, and the individuals, Americans, prisoners of, political prisoners. And then I'll save them for last, because I think that's the most important and least discussed topic. Well, looking at election integrity, because I've recently heard one of your, you had a webinar on election integrity, that Look Ahead America has been promoting, six tenets that you have put forth, that would be able to make people involved. And you were just mentioning it. People have become a lot more calcified, there's been a lot more division, and I think, at the same time, apathy has grown throughout the nation. That's why we're seeing fewer people, about four out of 10 people vote in a non-presidential year, on average. And I think it's because people have apathy, and I think what you're looking to do is to bring back the desire of people to vote, because they have the confidence again that their vote matters. So towards that end, let me ask you, Look Ahead America, what's their main purpose? And also, the election integrity, why is Look Ahead America and yourself targeting that issue?
Okay. Look Ahead America are, we are nonprofit, nonpartisan, America-first community organizers. So we are a 501(c)(3) organization, the primary goal of America-first community organizing. And community organizing is something that's been dominated by the left for generations. It's part of the battlefield that the right has neglected to great detriment for the country. When I say community organizing, inevitably, when I ask that before an audience, I say, what does that bring to mind? They all raise their hand and say, oh, Barack Obama. The one you see here, community organizing, that's what comes to mind. And I remember when he was running for president, we used that to ridicule him. But that was a big mistake. Community organizing is important. It's vital for us to take back our country. And it takes many forms. Probably the most significant activity we're involved with now in terms of community organizing is voter registration. We have a massive vote registration program operating right now in Arizona, and we're trying to get it started in other parts of the country. In Arizona, last year, we registered over 10,000 new patriotic Americans to vote. Community organizing also involves activism, getting involved in your communities, protesting, changing public opinion on local matters. It also means educating our state legislators and our federal legislators, all matters of importance to the America-first agenda, and making sure they know that we're paying attention, and that the constituents care about issues that they might overlook or might have a contrary opinion about. It's to bring elected officials into line. So we've engaged in community organizing at the local level, fighting against CRT and for our pro-America school board resolution. We're involved at the state level, battling for election integrity reforms, which are so important, not just to prevent illegal ballots from being cast, but to restore the public's confidence in the elections, which is as important as the election being clean, is the confidence that it's clean. And then on the federal level, we've been doing a lot on the Justice for J-6 movement, which we originated. We led the way on the Justice for January 6th movement to help bring public awareness of the political persecution of our patriotic brothers and sisters for their nonviolent participation in the events of January 6th of the US Capitol. So I'm happy to talk about all of those, but at the local, state, and federal level, we've been leading the way on America-first community organizing, and we're always looking for more people to join us and get involved, either as donors, which is very important, or as volunteers. Because if you sign up as a volunteer with Look Ahead America, we will put you to work.
Okay. And just for people to know, if you haven't noticed, in the description of the video, as well as in the final version, we're going to have on screen the website for Look Ahead America, so people can see that and go there directly to learn more. In terms of election integrity, and as I was mentioning, I think that's one of the biggest reasons why people aren't voting. They're not sure that their vote counts. In your recent webinar, you had mentioned one of the key things, and there were six major points. One of them was thumbprints, and using your thumbprint to ensure one vote, one voter, and it's secure. I want to ask, how has the various states, Arizona, Georgia, North Carolina, across the country, how have, Texas, how have the state legislatures? Because this isn't a federal thing, this is happening at state level. How are the states looking at that proposal? Is that gaining ground? Are we going to hear more about that for 2022?
That's actually a good question, but it sort of leads into what we are fundamentally about, which is, yes, well, is my state legislature going to do anything about it? My question and response is, what are you going to do to make them do something about it? So we have our election integrity, public policy objectives, that we believe if a state were to pass all six, they'd have incredibly secure elections. And we've seen progress in many states where these have reached a level of success, a small victory, as I would consider. Small victory being, we get a meeting with a state legislator between our representatives in their district, or their constituency, meets with them and educates them on an issue. Another greater small victory would be that legislator decides to introduce that bill to be considered, to just get it written into bill format and introduced. The next step would be for it to pass, and the final, you know, greatest victory would be for any one of these six to become state law. Now, we're a new organization, we've only really been active for the past year, and we have a few thousand volunteers across the country, but that, that's still a relatively small number. But despite that, we have had countless meetings between our representatives and state legislators on this specific issue. People educating their state legislators about these very simple common sense ways to secure the elections. And we've had, in states where you would not expect it, small victories. In New Jersey, we've had our legislation introduced. In California, it looks like they're going to embrace very aggressively one of our proposals on stopping black box funding equipment. These are states where you might not consider them to be friendly to conservative patriotic causes, but in fact, because of the persistence of our activists going to meet with their state senators, state legislators, they're changing minds, they're educating them on issues that really don't have to be partisan, because if you think about it, election integrity really doesn't have to be a partisan issue. Everybody really has an interest in elections being run well, and the public being confident in the outcome. Now, you can point to some quarters of maybe one or two parties where you, you know, there's the allegation that they benefit greatly from illegal ballots, and I'm not going to argue that, that's the case. But I think that the vast majority of voters, regardless of which party they identify with, very much want clean elections, and our six public policy objectives would help achieve that. So we've tracked several states so far in the last year have introduced legislation. I think, I think one state in particular has, now has on the books essentially three of our public policy objectives. I think that actually is the state of Arizona, or it soon will be. Other states have one or two of them. Some states are still in the consideration phase, but the real question is, if somebody watching this, what are you going to do about it? How are you going to help this happen? Because there's no, you know, our organization is entirely grassroots. There's not, no army of lobbyists that we have, we're not a moneyed interests, going and pounding on the doors of these state legislators to get this done. It's dependent on the voters organizing their community, getting educated on the issue, getting educated on the decision-makers, and going and making the case. That is at the heart of community organizing, it's at the heart of one of the five freedoms protected by the First Amendment, the right to petition your government for redress of grievances. And that's probably the least used, but most powerful of those First Amendment rights.
I'm very encouraged to hear, especially when you just mentioned California. That surprised me, I have to say. And New Jersey is not that far behind in this surprise. So I'm very happy to hear that it is gaining more. And I know we could spend the entire time talking on just this one issue easily, but I do invite people to see the link that'll be on the screen, so that they can hear your webinar, where you go into detail on these six different ideas that are being presented to states, and how people can then go forward to help and get that initiative in their own state, if it isn't already happening. So let me move on to ask a question about school boards, because this is also a very important issue that I think is being underrepresented, just like election integrity, and we're seeing school boards, no one's talking about that right now. It's, last year, we heard a little bit about it when Merrick Garland, the Attorney General of the United States, decided that parents were the most dangerous people in America, that they need to be investigated by the FBI in the full power of the United States government, because parents were involved with their school boards, because they cared about what their kids were learning. And this is coming at the same time that many people are now, across this nation, I believe it's a majority, depending on the polling you're looking at, are saying, no, we, we don't want our kids to have critical race theory applicated, applications in our schools, teaching children five, six, seven, eight, these ideas that aren't very American. In fact, in Florida, I believe they just were fighting over a bill on whether or not they should be teaching kindergarten children sexual education. So one of the things that Look Ahead America and yourself have been working on is a school board proposal. I know it's been presented in North Carolina. I believe it's also being presented in other states as well. But could you take a moment to tell us, what's that initiative about?
Yeah, I would be happy to talk to you about it. So we have heard a lot of news about something called Critical Race Theory. In truth, it's been around for a long time, and what it means exactly is, it's like, it's a metonymy. It's a term where, when I use it, it sort of covers a whole gamut of different things, of anti-Americanism, of racial division, of directing hatred towards white and Jewish people who are involved with the founding of the country. And it's really about dividing a people rather than uniting them, okay? And it's great to fight that, and I see it's being banned. I think it was great that President Trump banned it at the federal level, that's fantastic. And I think that it's important that it gets banned at the county level, state level, et cetera. But the thing is that, at least in public schools, it doesn't go nearly far enough just to ban CRT. Because when I was growing up in school, there wasn't really CRT, but there was just something else, another anti-American ideology, because the academics are largely left-wing, the people who write the textbooks are left-wing, the people who don't have enough going on in their lives, they decide to run for school board are invariably left-wing. The media that writes the articles that helps you decide who to vote for for school board are all left-wing. So even if you ban CRT, it will just create a vacuum that will be filled with another hate America, anti-American ideology, like Marxism or something like that, that will say that, yeah, America, okay, well, I guess we can't say America was historically a racist country, but we can say it was historically a oppressive country towards poor people and strict class of society that takes advantages of, of the poor folk, and, and, you know, it's basically a country of robber parents, right? It would just be something else, or, I don't know. You could, you could find a million different ideologies that the left can invent to try to crucify the founders of this country, and to ultimately make our future citizens hate their own country. That's the ultimate goal of CRT and all the possible replacements. So our message is, it is not enough just to ban CRT. We need to go on offense, and we've opened that battle, a new front in that battle, with our pro-America school board resolution. So it's not just out about outlawing CRT, it's like saying definitively that the primary objective of the public school system is to create future citizens that love their country, that appreciate the wonderful blessing it is to live here, and are willing to make great sacrifices for this country to continue, which is necessary for any country to continue. Because if you have a country that no one's willing to fight or die for it, that country is over. And the entire public school apparatus right now is built around making people hate their country, make them believe it is not something worth fighting for, not something worth dying for. And that is an existential threat. And that's why, I know, you're supposed to go to school to learn to read and write and do arithmetic. That is a, an objective of the school, but the primary objective, the most important responsibility of our public schools are to create good citizens who will perpetuate our country in the same way that generations before us made great sacrifices, so that we could live in this relative utopia compared to what human experience has been from our very beginning. And that's why, look, this resolution is on our website at lookatamerica.org/proamerica. It is avowedly pro-American. And look, we don't shy away from, in this resolution, we don't shy away from controversial issues in our past. I know that the left often likes to bring up, you know, you should be ashamed of your country because of slavery. That's not the way to look at it. This is exact, I'm going to read from you exactly from our resolution on slavery. Whereas, while slavery found in our early years originated from Africa and the Middle East, where it's still practiced today, the people of our nation eradicated that evil practice from our shores at great cost, and set the example for liberty and freedom around the world. So we're not going to let them throw mud at us and either just ignore it or try to say, yeah, I guess, no. We take that example of them throwing mud, and we show that it's actually a place where our country shines and sets a beacon for the world and a precedent for others to follow. And that is the case, that is the case over and over again for all of the leftist criticisms of our country. And this resolution turns it around and goes on offense across the board. And I can't say how proud I am, I'm just going to read the last, the, be it resolved, the primary educational mission of this school district, because we're trying to pass these at the school board level, is to instill in our students a pride in the nation that our founders created, and to develop a clear, unbiased understanding of America's glorious history and the promise it holds for untold generations to come. We must instill in our students a love and respect of this nation, its history, institutions, culture, people, and future, and to embrace our great honor to live not just in this nation, but for this nation, to work tirelessly to preserve and protect it, and as our founders did, pledge to its survival, our lives, our fortune, and our sacred honor. This world, in the next century, is not going to be dominated by a country that is ashamed of its own past. You walk into any school in China, our greatest geopolitical, military, economic rival in the world, and you ask that child if they're proud of their country, and there is a resounding yes. We cannot compete with that, with a populist that is constantly apologizing and ashamed of what its country has, but we need one that is instead proud and unapologetic about the great accomplishments behind us, and inspired to continue great accomplishments in front of us.
And I agree with you completely, and I did read the proposal as well. I think it's a well-worded and very pro-American, very positive outlook, and I think that's important. Our education system needs to be positive, not just about the children and what their future is, but also that they are American, because in my lifetime, having lived in Moscow, having lived in Tbilisi Riga, in seeing an attempted coup, in talking to people around the world, you know what? We have a great nation that has uplifted more people than any other civilization, any other nation that has ever been. And that's why I love this document, and I do recommend everyone who's seeing this, take a moment, read that, and tell me how this proposal you have put forward. Look at it and see it in your school board, and tell me it's not going to make your kids better if the school board's following that. I truly believe it.
Right. I appreciate those really kind words, and this again comes back to community organizing. We are counting on citizens to sign up with Look Ahead America, to accept our training. We give guidance, resources, you know, money in some cases, to get you to organize your neighborhood, figure out how your school board meetings work, meet with members in advance, go to the school board, and pressure them to vote on this resolution. Now, we've had it voted on a few times, and it's actually lost. But that's not a, that's not a loss for us, it did not pass. It's actually a victory for us, because it informs us what members of those school boards think, and allows the public to become aware of where those school board members stand on the most important issue of a school board. So even in loss, we now identify folks who don't, don't really care about this country, who support CRT, who want to see us divided and weak. So even in the losing of vote at a school board, we, we reap tremendous benefits, because now, let's say, somebody's running against one of those school board members, they can bring this up as an issue and club them about it.
And possibly vote them out, which is always a good thing. People need to be involved in voting for, for the issues you believe in and against the people who are ineffective and not promoting the best interests of the nation. I believe that completely, and that's one of the things this channel takes on. I know we're running out of a little bit of time. I do want to speak about January 6th. I think this is very important. As much as these other issues aren't spoken about, this one, when it is spoken about, is spoken in the most negative terms possible. Every single person that's been involved or connected to January 6th so far has been painted as a traitor, as an insurrectionist, as a treasonous person. And yet, out of the 725 people who have been arrested, of these people who, I believe the majority, about 400 to 500 of them, have been in, in the jail cell for a year now, and have mostly not been charged, have not actually had their day in court, there's really no one standing up for them, except for, I see your organization and yourself stepping up in the public and saying, hang on, these people are, one, innocent before proving guilty, and, two, really aren't this evil that's being portrayed by the mainstream media and certain political agents with an agenda. And I wanted to ask you, in your experience, you've talked, I know you have a podcast, it's called The Prisoner, Prisoner Project?
Political Prisoner Podcast.
Political Prisoner, yes, I apologize, which is a podcast. I know in February, you were doing a conversation with one of the J-6, one of the individuals arrested for J-6, January 6th. I know just a couple of days ago, I think it's three days ago, there was another interview with one of the J-6 individuals. Let me ask you, what, what is happening in that? We have people, I've heard, there's a gentleman, I believe, he committed suicide in the DC jail, I believe it was, because of the treatment he's been getting. What's going on?
Look, this is an area where I'm very proud of Look Ahead America's work. We have led the way. We actually, back in January of 2021, about 20 days after January 6th occurred, we introduced, sorry, we sent a letter to the FBI and the Department of Justice, telling them that they need to drop all charges against the nonviolent offenders who have been picked up. And at that point, it was only about 200 people. Since then, it's grown to around seven, over 700. who've been picked up and charged primarily with nothing even remote violent or destructive, but just parading, trespassing, being hit with the same four charges. And in some cases, completely nonsensical conspiracy charges. And we've led the way on this issue. And we believe that the left's agenda in this country, from purging patriots from the military, from pushing CRT, from expanding the great powers of government and expanding the powers of the Capitol Police, that all of that is premised on the idea that there were some kind of white supremacist insurrection, violent attempt to overthrow the government on January sixth. And it's all lies. And we have been repeatedly and aggressively educating the public on that issue. We have held over 70 events throughout this country in front of the Department of Justice, in front of the FBI, in front of the prison in DC where these political prisoners are being held, at the United Nations, at the US Capitol, most famously in September, and many, many other events from coast to coast and I believe most of the states of this country, over 70 events, changing the public's opinion, making them aware of the fact that these are political prisoners, that the way they are being treated is vastly different than protesters that the US Capitol have been treated even just a few years ago. I met with a woman who went to protest and disrupted the business of the US Senate. She was arrested over 20 times for it. Each time she was fined about 50 bucks and released that day. And then came back the same day to do it again. We have people sitting in prison right now who've not yet even been tried, not convicted of anything since January sixth for doing the same thing. And many people have had their lives destroyed, lost their jobs, lost their houses, lost their families, committed suicide because of the pressure of the Department of Justice trying to destroy their lives for walking through a public building on a day you could, any other given day, you could walk through a public building, destroying nothing, touching nothing, but yet, you know, they just had the wrong ideology. And these people are being punished not for what they did, but because of what they believe. Want to make that very clear. So we spent the last year educating the public and we now know through survey research that the vast majority of Republicans agree with us and the vast, and a majority, a plurality of the public agrees with us, of the voter public. So now it's time to take that education that we've, that we've conducted of the public and move it in a way that can really have an impact. So we recently launched the Justice for J six question, or the J six question project, where we find candidates who are running for office, incumbents or challengers, and ask them on camera what they're going to do about the political prisoners who've been persecuted by a Department of Justice. And then we record that, we publicize that video and we hold those people accountable. And if, if a member gives a good answer, maybe it helps them in the election. If they give a bad answer, maybe, maybe it hurts them in the election. But we're holding them accountable on this issue and making sure their constituencies are aware of where they stand on this important issue. And we're not going to let them duck it or ignore it because there have been a lot of cowardly members of Congress who've tried to stay away from this issue, when it's their own constituents. Now, they're interested in sending billions of dollars in aid over to Ukraine and humanitarian aid and weapons. I'm not good, you know, people have different opinions about that. But they're doing that while they're ignoring their own constituents who are being railroaded by a Department of Justice that is completely out of control and is politically persecuting their own constituents, the people are supposed to be their first priority. And we're going to hold many of those members accountable who've done that and who refuse to speak out on this issue. We're not going to give them the opportunity to remain silent any longer. But this comes back to community organizing. We need people and you're, we all have a TV studio right here. To find those members of Congress, start rolling tape and ask them, what are you going to do about the political prisoners who are being persecuted for their participation in the January sixth Capitol protest? Don't argue with them, don't try to change their mind, just get what they're saying, get their answer, send it back to us, we'll blow it up.
I may have one, I, I think I have time for just one more question. And I, I know we're almost out of time. And again, I thank you for the time you've given us today to really find out from the horse's mouth exactly where you and Look Ahead America stand on these very important issues. If there could be a perfect resolution to the January sixth situation for the individuals who've been arrested, for the nation as a whole, can you tell me, what do you see as the ideal outcome? And perhaps even what you think is the realistic one?
The ideal outcome?
Yeah, I know, it's a tough question.
The ideal outcome is that all candidate, all the people who are persecuted have all the charges dropped against them, that the person who shot Ashley Babbitt is tried and sentenced accordingly for her murder, that we find out what happened to the other woman who died that day and that the DC police officer was seen on battering her to death with a baton. It finds justice, where all of the prosecutors who brought these cases are fired and impeached from their jobs. All the judges that allowed these unjust cases based on lies to move forward or impeach from the bench. And that January sixth is hereby known as Patriot Day, where great Americans who rose up to express and exercise their First Amendment rights were then politically persecuted and, and that their sacrifices, the sacrifice of Ashley Babbitt and Roseanne Boylan, who died that day, and the other individuals, the other individual who was prosecuted who committed suicide, and all those that have suffered in prison are commemorated on that date for their, their bravery to express their First Amendment rights and to remember that this nation has a dark stain on it as a result of their persecution. Now, what's really going to happen? I think that in the potential that there's new leadership in Congress, there's a good chance that the first of January sixth commission is not going to continue as it exists. There's a chance that the 14,000 hours of videotapes that the Capitol Police are sitting on, refusing to make public, even make it available to the people whose defense legally depends on it, it will be released. I think that there will be pressure to pardon these folks in the next administration, to issue a blanket pardon to the vast majority of them, depending on who's president, we've heard rumblings of that. But those are things that are practical. And I also think what is practical is that a member of Congress who is an incumbent, who did nothing, gets caught on tape answering the J six question and loses their election because of their, because of their wrong answer and because of their inaction on the issue. I want to see members of Congress lose elections over bad answers to the J six question. Now, I'm not saying we're not partisan, we don't support candidates, we don't endorse parties, but folks need to be held accountable and we're helping the voters to do that.
And that's the important thing, getting the voters involved in this entire process. And I think that's one of the biggest things that Look Ahead America has been doing is getting voters informed and getting them involved. Whichever way they choose to do so is up to them, but that you're giving them that option, I think it's important. I want to thank my guest today, Matt Brainard, who is the Executive Director of Look Ahead America. A very accomplished man, someone who you're going to see again, of course, and you have seen him on CNN, on C-SPAN. By the way, do you think you're going to be back on Tim Poole again?
I'm always happy to go on. I've actually been on like three or four times. It's been a while. I was on the, like the extended version of one episode. They like, I was sort of hanging out and they said, oh, come on for the, I guess the part you have to pay for. So, hey, it was really nice being on your show, it's a real honor. I think you've got, you know, what you're doing with this program is badly needed and your audience is nowhere near as large as it deserves to be. So, you know, I, I'm rooting for you and anything I or my organization can do. If you ever, anything we're doing, you want to have us on to talk about it, either I myself or one of our great volunteers or our staff would be happy to come on the show and promote our appearance afterwards. So again, you ask the kind of questions that reporters at CNN and MSNBC and the mainstream media refuse to ask. And, you know, I, the format, no soundbites, who can argue with that?
Like to be tough, fair and listen to what people have to say. Again, folks, this has been Matt Brainard, Look Ahead America. I thank you for taking the time to hear this. Please go to the link, check out the information for yourself and make your own decisions from that point forward. Thank you.